Good afternoon, everybody. Sorry my focus is too narrow. I'll call to order the committee of the whole for Tuesday, March 27, 2025, through the late additions or deletions. Okay, somebody please move that the March 25, 27, 25, the whole meeting agenda being adopted, council week, council plan, favor, very. Also, would you please move that the March 6, 2025, the whole meeting minutes be adopted as presented, council plan, council theory, favor, great. Okay, we will move on to 5.1, 2025 by the discussion.
And through the mayor and I've been knowing the door open, otherwise everybody's gonna melt in here, but if it gets into loud, then we can shut it. Which is the reason we have HREC on our project in 2025.
Please.
No, the rec center is booked up for spring break, so. Okay, so 2025 to 2029 financial plan. At our last meeting, I had requested from council to bring back two options. One with tax and utilities at eight and a half percent, or sorry, tax and garbage at eight and a half percent, no change to water and sewer. And the other at 7.85% for tax and garbage, no change to water and sewer. So originally, February 27th, or whenever it was, I believe. This is what council was originally looking at, so nine and a half percent increase for water, 7.1 for sewer, 13.3 for garbage, and 13.3 for taxes. Again, the committee of the whole requested a property tax increase of eight and a half percent and of 7.85%. A garbage rate increase of 8.5% and 7.85%. With the water and sewer rate increases in both options to remain at 9.5 and 7.1 respectively. So again, originally, which is in the second column here, presented on February 27th. It was an annual charge for representative home, which is that average valued home, just over $400,000 in Lilwet. If they had all three utility services, they would pay about $3100 a year, which would be an increase of about $312 over the prior year. Reducing tax and garbage to eight and a half percent reduces that annual charge to just over $3,000. So it's a reduction from the original of about $91 per year. Reducing it to 7.85% brings it just under $3,000 a year and a further reduction of about $11 per year. Further year, so overall, just over $100 a year, and it goes down to 7.85. And I am showing here as well the breakdown of what goes into general operations and what's actually specified for asset management. So you can see if we reduce to 8.5, we are reducing what we're setting aside into reserves. And again, a further reduction, if we reduce it to 7.85% is. If this is too hard to read, I have. Okay, so, yes.
Um, good mayor, did we know yet what the S L R D were having to wonder, yeah, since last meeting?
We have, it just hasn't been approved yet, so. I can't, yeah, I understand, I can't say it's possible, I just wondered if we have.
It's looking, it's looking.
So looking at the first option, which was requested by the majority of those that were at the meeting, which was 7.85% for taxes and garbage. Leaving again the water and sewer at nine and a half and 7.1. Garbage at 7.85% would generate about $20,000 in additional revenue from that of 2024. And 7.85% for property taxes would generate approximately 331,000 over 2024's revenue. And of course, we are using the COVID relief funding to offset some of the wages, regardless of which portion council decides to go to. But depending on whether it's the 8.5 or the 7.85, to cover that reduction in revenues, we do have to reduce our transfers to reserves. So this here shows the changes from what was presented originally. This is at 8.5%. You would think it should actually be a negative, it's not because we're using the COVID relief funding, so it's offsetting most of the the reduction. And here's the change, if we go to 7.85, it reduces it a further $20,000, $21,000. So overall, bottom line does not change. We still have a balanced budget. We do that by reducing our transfers to reserves to offset the reduction that council requested in the tax and garbage rates. That's all I.
Council, great, so this 2025 budget just has the difference in percentage of taxes, but doesn't have any projects, right, until the month is over.
Right, are you? So the 2025 operating budget does not have projects. This here does have projects excluding the Columbarium, which is that 70,000, that's every backup.
So, um. I still, I'll just reiterate, just in case anyone here of, obviously, last meeting. That's, um, like 7.85 to me is still such a guideline. And I, I think that a lot of it has to do with not only the cost increases. And also what we're going to see in the next year, but has a lot to do with our asset management. And having up there at $90 million in assets. And once we have that done to enable us to apply to the government or grant funding. It's, it also has been a barrier when it comes to taxes and that we have to start putting away for $90 million. And I think that, well, we do have to start putting away for our assets. It's far up this table to actually do something. So I don't know if we're, and I think where I get stuck is that we're putting so much into our revenues, our revenue. Funds. And then if there's something left over at the end of the year, then we're putting those into our reserves. Then we're putting those into our reserves too, which to me would seem like overtaxing, but it's not. And that's where I kind of get tricked up with that. So this year, while we're using our, our COVID relief funds to offset any. Any increases that we're going to have to keep it down from 13%. Next year, it seems like we're gonna have more of an increase because we won't have our COVID relief funds. And yet we're still putting away for our asset management, and we're still putting away into our surpluses. And we still have, you know, a bit of revenue if that's not spent, so I don't know how to break that down other than.
And I, and you're right, and I totally understand what you're saying. But I, if you're thinking of a magnitude of $100 million. Putting a couple extra 10,000, 20,000, 100,000 a year away. On the scope of $100 million is not making much of a difference. So it, you would think that, you know, we have a couple hundred thousand dollar surplus that we're putting aside into with the reserves that we weren't expecting. That's gonna make our future tax increases significantly lower. But a couple hundred thousand is not a significant portion of 10 million, or sorry, of 100 million. Yeah, there's just a part of the tax base of like 1,500 parcels. Absolutely, we gotta break that $90 million into those parcels, that's absolutely daunting, go ahead.
Don't worry about our asset management, can we go over that and maybe figure that out whole time? I don't know, I think that's where our problem is. Um. Next year, we're gonna, we're gonna need, like, you're gonna be up here 20%. And that, that, that's gonna be a lost tool again, you know, the next council said what not down the road, are they gonna be at 50 and 60%? And that's where I have a problem figuring that all out, and that's where I don't think those dollars are adding up properly, of course. I don't know how we figure that out, but.
Well, and for the mayor, unfortunately, I don't have a crystal ball, right? So I don't know what's gonna happen 20 years from now. And maybe, I think I've used before the example of a backhoe. You know, in the city of Canalope, that backhoe might only last, I'm just making this up, three years. But for Lilwet, we use it much less often, way less hours, maybe it's gonna last us 10 years. But in an asset management plan, where we sit right now with ours is very general. It's not, we haven't had the time to make it Lilwet specific, to go item by item. And say, you know what, that backhoe, no, it's gonna last more than three years, it's gonna last 10, let's fix that. We're getting to that point, and hopefully, once we're fully staffed, I have the capacity to work on that. So those numbers are likely gonna change. But again, it's kind of like the couple hundred thousand dollars compared to 100 million. Doing those things is gonna change in some way, but I'm not confident that it's gonna be millions of dollars that it's gonna change. That you're gonna see a really significant change in the demand that Lilwet has over the future years to replace our assets.
Um, like our roads are involved in all that and everything I've got to, and is that a requirement, or is that something we could take out?
No, it's, it's all of our tangible capital assets. So that's all of our assets that have more than a year's expected life and that are worth more than generally $5,000. So we don't have a choice in what we include in our asset management.
So I may have all, last week, boss agenda that went through, any asset management plan with this.
All right.
Probably been through that, to get into, and here as well, let me take a great event and set out and run through all of, you know, the gap of where we sit, just that, and I think that shows an important thing. Then the idea is not to, is not to rush, it's not to rush forward, and asset management plans take a long time, a lot of money each end of the day. It's a really good guidance, it's a really good document to try and guide us in the best way that all municipalities market assets. It's very, very different from running a 90% basically, big businesses, which we need to be, but make sure that we're not doing something that in 20 years, it's just going to be made to the final. But that's a quality, we want to make sure that we're very good at setting up, to ensure generations, all that. My advice, John's advice will be the same with this, let's not rush what we're doing with the asset management plan. Let's really get into it and really compare it with three times this year, throughout the year, and really spend some time to go through it. But the end of the day, it's the municipalities, it's council, the council, if I could say, we're willing to take it at 100% risk. I'm already saying, don't put that, it's not what we should do, same idea as what we're seeing about 2% versus 7%. But I think we should definitely, but look at a couple of things this year, and have a better understanding for next year's, for next year's asset management budget discussions. I think that'll give us a lot more time to discuss it, a lot more time to look through what actually we can, as far as, that's true, I say. Hey, he'll be amazed that, like Johnny said, 10,000, $100,000 a year, it sounds like a lot. But it doesn't, doesn't, doesn't add up quick enough, unfortunately, I think we don't need to have. Commercial and industrial input for taxation, that's where we really need to start to learn from. It's that opportunity to just start looking at, not in case of the taxes for people that are here, that's what we're doing, it's about generating people business. And looking at other options, and DC scenes, and all these other things, there are two of the options, but there was no one silver, Lilwet. Hey, I was talking to Emily, who put in, believed in asset management plan, this is what I'm doing, if here on, 60 million. For the 7,000 people, and definitely taking into consideration, I think after that as well. So we need to see what other tools we've got, I think, I would suggest that we don't start back and cut into the asset management plan this year. You're only gonna be back at the same table looking at it again next year, thinking, trying to really want to get that standard up. If there's going through, I've been completely, fully, I was, but I mean, if you don't start applying to the table, we must assume.
Through the mayor, after the N B I T meeting this morning, there's certain things that they're, that come up their criteria, that sort of initiative, that part. Where they're going to want asset management plans attached to your grant applications. They want to see that people that are doing a project actually have something planned in the future to take care of it. And so I'm assuming that other grants are probably going to do the same thing. They were really, really oversubscribed for the amount of funds that had been distributed, like we spent three hours coming to sell. Just to be able to carry on to group, and they couldn't see it in any better, in the next 20 days, or the third one. Because everybody's depending on grants, and there's only so much money. And nobody knows what's gonna happen with the election. Just think for fun, so the asset management is going to have your, your E P A for some stuff together. I think that was a whole ton of it, there's a process, right? We're gonna apply for a road to be done, and we have to prove that we have asset management plan in place, that we're gonna take care of that road. And that we're never gonna ask for another grant to cover that road again, so.
If you're gonna identify, asset management is an integral part of any kind of application. If we're doing, just like I said, updates, or we're doing a new waterline extension, then we're maybe, it's going to be identified on your asset management plan. How to do that, if you follow your asset management, if you follow your asset management plan, you need to project and collect, seem to be collecting that. So that is, this is, this is where the rubber meets, this is where the hard lines are going, where we can, this is always going to be faced, I don't think this is going to be fixed over time. Better if we understand the asset management plan, but this is always going to be where staff stand by, guys. But that's, it's your job, it's your job, your job's very much in looking at other numbers, the asset management's, that's what I sense, and even to jack that forward. And those numbers are scary, so two ways around it, same as all, but it's the same as owning a house. You want to take your quality in your house, you get a roof that's given several shingles on it, maybe a single place window, you can take decisions. And as you were looking at what asset management plan looks like for your own house, over the next 20 years, you scare yourself. There are other options I need as well, you know, we've got funding, we can grab allocations, we can get other ideas and all the tools. And what can we, so the asset management plan is maybe much the best, and this, and this is just the light that you.
Okay, our asset management plan is, well, it's, we've been charged around 13.7% this year, because we were charged 8% last year. Now, if we go through our asset management, and we can bring out a percentage from 10%, that is currently our test cell base, down to 8%. Out, instead of a 10%, like, is that possible? Or is there, is there different things we can do in there, like, you know, like?
Through the mayor, no, it's not possible. The, again, a backhoe, its replacement value is, and I'm just pulling this out of thin air, I was gonna say something else. To replace a backhoe costs $300,000. You, it doesn't matter what we do, we can't change how much it's gonna cost to replace it. So it's the replacement cost that drives our asset management. It's how much it's gonna cost us to replace our assets as they break down, reach the end of their lives. We can't change how much it's gonna cost, we're guessing way into the future how much it's gonna cost. So it could turn around and, you know, we're thinking it costs 300,000 today, in 20 years, it's gonna cost 400,000. Or maybe it's gonna be 500,000, maybe it's gonna be 300,000, we don't have a crystal ball. So just like the financial plan, just like almost everything that we prepare for council. We can only give you the best information that we have today, but we can't see into the future any more than you can. But, you know, budgeting the numbers to make it so that, you know, we don't have to raise 13%, we only have to raise 10%. Sure, that's possible, would I do it? No, because it's not responsible. But it, it comes down to how much risk council is willing to, to put on their shoulders. If, if you're okay saying, no, you know what, the backhoe's gonna last another 10 years, why are you apparently telling me it's fine, it's 10? Then that's a risk that council is, is putting on, on their shoulders, that's totally fine. The numbers we give you, you don't have to. I was gonna say, accept them, I mean, you do kind of have to accept them, otherwise I'm not doing my job, but you don't have to use them. You can use different numbers, it's how much risk you're willing to, to shoulder.
Yeah, I'm, I'm thinking not in backhoe, I'm thinking in the roads. Like, I don't know where they get their average in the roads, like we have around here, for how much traffic, like, you know, towns. We get a hell of a pile of more traffic on their, on their roads and whatnot. So are they taking a big average on our, on their, on roads and giving us a high rate? It's not some expensive asset, our town roads, and, you know, our town roads are all that great. But at the same time, they're gonna, they'd just really like to configure that management well, because it's, it's not right, there's no way you can afford to do what we do.
Sorry, it's through there, 100%, and that's where I'm saying, the asset management plan that we have right now is very general. It, it's kind of like the, the template that you start from. Now, once I have the capacity and the rest of management has the capacity, we can go through the items. We can say Fraser View Road, no, that's gonna last another 25 years, let's fix that. So that's upcoming, and that is probably in most cases, going to bring the replacement value down. But not at all, in some, it's gonna go up.
I'm trying to look at through the year, the other, if we look at everything, a technology advancements. A, things like technology advancing, changes how we do business, and what we do business. Take a full master plan for our roads, get a full water plan for our roads, so that we can identify what roads we're doing, when, and how we're doing them. So it's not just the replacements of the roads, it's everything underneath it as well. So it's a sewer and the water updates that we need to consider as well, and how and when and who needs it. So if we look at all the general roads in our area, I would say the majority of roads, I'm gonna say 70% of the roads in town, don't get a lot of complaints. But I think, since I've been here with fact, 20 complaints with certain roads, don't get an awful lot of complaints for roads. So are roads in good condition? Yeah, we say we have. Is the infrastructure under the roads in terrible condition? Yes. So in order for us to do the roads, or in order for us to do our pipes, we're gonna have to replace the roads. Which isn't something that we want to do, and it's not something we, we would want to spend that money on. But if we were to replace $200,000 of pipe, probably gonna need to turn and sell it into a 1.5 to $2,000 quarter, really quickly. That's the problem, all of these things are entered, they're really linked in municipalities. There's a lot of options, if we just have to do the ground, and we do the road to get, we can pulverize the place, we can do an overlay. If those repairs that need done just specifically for our roads, there are cheaper options, there's easier ways to do them. This asset management plan looks at, well, if we were to do main street or Caesar, if we're gonna replace those pipes, how much does it cost to do engineering, archaeology? The water, the sewer, the survey, and then the replacement of, just, it's very expensive, very quick, and.
And going back to that, like, are we sure that the pipes underground are bad, or are we not sure? Is there not number of grants that we get for that too, also?
Yeah, through the mayor, there are opportunities to go through these grants to get replacements done. Hey, and I think that we are setting ourselves up properly for our grants, that's what sadly we're trying to do. And this is why it gets really annoying, key point to the grant, that's following our asset management plan. Okay, so it, it becomes like a circular economy, you know, we can't do one without the other. Hey, camp, how many, how many, what's our, have we used, high consumption summer, what was our highest, point 9 million?
Eighty-nine million.
Eighty-nine million of, how much is that? Eighty-nine million megawatts.
Eight million.
So eighty-nine million, eight or nine mega, that's there. So eighty-nine million, eight or nine mega, that's there.
A million liters.
Million liters of water to their consumption by a community this size. So it was, it's half of that. We, we, we are generating and aiding and spending money on water to, when we're done in that week. So we have substantial needs in our times. So we need the option to. That's, that's one of the things that we need to establish. Look at, is there other options? Yeah, we could try and use some of the pipes. We could start looking at these other options through technology. So great things, but we still need to go through and identify what's been done through a water, a water master plan and need effectively knock off the top behind being leaks. That's why, that's why last year we pushed such an emphasis on hydrants. So we need to, it's like any other business, if you're doing, you need to save money, but you also need to generate more money. So we need to save money by not allowing these to happen. But then we need to try and generate more money.
Okay, if we don't stick to our percentages of our asset management plan, what's gonna happen ten years down the road? And you know, we're already at thirteen, we went from ten to thirteen. And people in seven day five or seven or eight five. We're gonna be at fifteen, sixteen next year. And then possibly a year after that, if we don't go up to sixteen or whatever, it's gonna go up to twenty. And what, how's that gonna affect us with the, with the asset management plan? With the government, they're gonna make that to that state. That's, that's what bothered me a lot.
So. Well, then, again, it's, it's a forecast. It's a guess at what's going to happen in the future. And I'm hoping, I would think, that government knows as well as we do that nobody can see into the future. We do the best we can with the information that we have today. And council makes the best decisions, in your opinions, based on community input. That's all that we can do. Um, are we forced to follow our asset management plans the letter? I would say if our asset management plan was, um, which is a, a work in progress, was more tailored to Lilwet than just in general, then I think that the expectation that we follow it, I would expect would be higher. Um, right now, everything is a guess. We haven't had the, the time to go into the, the nitty gritty details of it. Like, how many years is this actually gonna, gonna last? Is it really three or is it, you know, closer to fifteen? Which in a lot of cases is an adjustment that has to be made. Um. If your question is, if we don't follow our asset management plan that says, you know, last year said, uh, ten percent, we went eight, now it's thirteen, say we go seven, eight, five, next year it's twenty. And we don't follow that, we don't do twenty next year, so the government's gonna kiss in the butt? I wouldn't think so. Because council is accepting the risk of a failure of something. And maybe that means we have to borrow. Maybe we don't have the funds to set us up. But that's not necessarily that. And emergencies, huh? Um, again, I, I can't tell you what's gonna happen tomorrow, let alone twenty years.
Sorry, we're, we, go ahead, go ahead. Um, I'm just curious. Like, we have these projects, so we have the asset management plan. I don't know what the figure is on fire hydrants, but now we've replaced. So does that figure on the asset management plan change? Should we have now the holding?
Eh, very generally, yes. Hydrants are a different story because they're actually not a capital, um, well, I'm just like, yes. We had something that has passed its end of life. We replaced it. So now its new life is, I don't know how long a fire hydrant lasts, thirty years? It's thirty years down the road. So we don't have to replace it now for another thirty years.
Okay, so how does, like, the crack ceiling program, how does that affect roads? Like, as far as asset management, I'm just saying.
Crack ceiling won't affect asset management significantly because we're not really fixing anything. We're, we might be extending the life by a couple of years, but it's not a significant, um, repair or replacement. Um, tearing up, and I'm thinking specifically of, of Russell because that's been sort of talked about for years. Doing the water sewer on Russell, um, which coincides with doing the pavement as well. That would probably, I want to say significantly affect our asset management. Because you're talking, you're talking water, you're talking sewer, and you're talking a road. Um, so now if we replace those and now it's gonna last sixty more years, well, that's, that's, that'll affect the figures, right? Absolutely.
So I have a question then. So, but don't we still have to keep putting away the same amount for the road? Because in sixty years, we have to have that amount plus what it's gonna cost, what we think it's going to cost in sixty years. We have to have that put away and ready. So even though we fixed Russell Street, next year we have to put away for future Russell Street, correct?
It, it is. It's a circle like that. The, I would say the, the biggest issue that we have right now is that we're behind on our asset replacements. So we have a whole bunch of assets that our asset management plan says, we better get on and replacing these. So our, our replacement costs in the next near future, which twenty years is actually near future for asset management, um, is significantly higher. Whereas if it's spaced out, if we replace, say we do Russell this year and we do, um, I was gonna say we, we'll do that one, uh, Fraser View next year. We did, then now we've staggered it out so that it's not all impacting all at once, which is really the, the issue that we're, we're facing right now.
And further to that, so we can't count on grants for any of our financing, even though we get them. Can't count on them because we don't know if we're gonna get them. So say we go with Russell Street one more time and we say, okay, this is gonna cost us two million dollars. We're gonna apply for a grant for one million dollars. And, oh, thank our lucky stars, we got the grant for one million dollars. How does that affect our asset management going forward? Because now our asset management that we've been putting away for is two million, but it's only costing us one million. Does that affect the tax increase from next year a bit or significantly?
Uh, for the whole million dollars? A bit, because it'll be, it'll be spaced out over the, over the period. Um, so, I mean, a million dollars is super significant to probably anybody that's sitting here. It's not to a, a ten. It's, it's not a significant amount. Spaced out over the years, yes, it would reduce the amount that we, we need to generate, but it's not gonna be like five percent reduction. I mean, maybe it was.
Okay, so what we really need to do is, is again, always put after our grants as much as possible for our asset management to keep reducing the tax increase for our asset management, correct? And that asset, that million dollars is not gonna just go into surplus and we're still gonna tax the same. We're gonna, we're gonna count for that million dollars in our assets, correct? It's not gonna be like a, you know, a surplus and then just put it into our reserve and we keep going. It's.
And, and that's the, um, sorry. That's the, um, the ideal goal of an asset management plan is exactly what you're saying. Are we there yet? No, because we haven't gotten into the nitty gritty yet. So I can't tell you for sure that that backhoe. I, I couldn't even tell you what the replacement cost is listed right now. Is it what it should actually be? So we're not at that point yet. But hundred percent, that's how it's supposed to work.
I remember, we're only here two of this, this whole thing. And, you know. Easy job at our financials. We really appreciate all this and we would like to have more, you know, asset management training and confirmation and because, you know, while you guys do now look after the district and, and tell us what we, we look after the taxpayers and we, you know, do our best with that. So it's always, you know, that, that, of course.
Hey, um, in order to be questioned, I'm sure. If we go through our asset management, I'm the one that's wanting to give one five because I wanna try and stay close to that number seven. Now, what I'm thinking is if we can get our, our asset management down another two percent, seven percent, three percent, we'll be right on, we're at all the trouble. That, that's the way I'm thinking. When you start going through, you know, maybe that backhoe's been lasting, it's been three years from the last ten years. It's going to last another thirty, forty years. If we go through it and bring that down, I don't wanna get too far down because, you know, somebody down the road's been on the paper. And, and we either gonna borrow money or whatnot, but if we can try to, try to stay a bit level, you know, a couple percent low, but what we're supposed to have, what we got. And have a good look at that asset management and see where we should get, get it to. I, I think we're on a really thick part on that because, you know, we might shoot ourselves in the foot. I mean, you know, it's nice to not raise taxes, but at the same time, boy, if we don't, then we have trouble. Then somebody like, you know, we might not be here, but somebody's gonna have problems. Well, there's gonna be fun on to the taxpayer and the end. That's my problem with the whole thing.
So I'm not gonna support it, eight point five. I'm, I'm just, I just. Seven point eight five is a huge amount and it doesn't seem like, uh, well, it does. It's a huge amount, so I'm not going over the line. I'm sticking my hand out. I think I will support that, but you can refer to make that motion if you want to. But I think that, uh, seven point eight five and that's for the garbage to the water and that the sewer I'm okay with because I know what those infrastructures are and I know that they are, oh, the ones they mounted might need to do anything with. So, uh, I'm okay with those ones. And garbage, I think, is, like I said, I, I feel like that one's a bit high. Uh, the, the original thirteen point three percent. So I'm good to take that down to seven point eight five too. But no, I don't think, I'm not going over seven point five. And I think that too, this is, like I said, this is year two of us trying to do this. I don't think it's fair that prior to this, you know, we haven't been putting away for asset management, right? So, and all these years we've been, if we paid off our loans, we've done those things. If something catastrophic was to happen, to take a loan, we could, we could, we have, you know, our ten million dollars in the bank. We're, you know, it's not like we're a girl. So I think we're, we're muted.
That's what we, well, I'm just curious. I'm not even sure I'm on the right page here. But it says property test, we're gonna reduce it to seven point eight five. It's basically thirteen sixty-nine. We brought to the eight point five, thirteen seventy-eight, right? It's like eight bucks? Or am I reading this wrong?
That's correct.
But I mean, you're not including SLRD.
No, I understand.
Not including, and that's based on, uh, uh, five hundred thousand dollars.
And it's just over four hundred thousand. It's like it's four hundred dollars, right?
Right. So, I mean, if you have more than it's more.
And less than it's less.
But you're thinking about last year, yeah. Shouldn't know what I'm doing.
Eight, eight point seven, I believe.
I have another question here. And if I sell it, what? Is the interest rate that we earn on investments? Do you know? I, I wanna compare it with the interest rate on the loan. Is that?
Uh, I, I'm just. It's for the mayor. It's, it's not really comparable. Um, we're, because the bank can't, it keeps lowering the interest rate, our investment interest rates are going down as well. Um, so we're not doing nearly as well as we were doing two years ago, I think it was, when they were, they were really like golden gang busted with the interest rates and we were doing really well. Um, whereas lending rates, um, they usually base that off prime loss. So it's, they're working in two different directions. Um, borrowing, you're gonna, I, I wanna say you're always gonna pay a higher interest than you get from the same. And that's it. It's cheaper for, for to pay, most usually, yes.
She wanted.
The, uh, it's for the mayor. And I know where it happened. It's where you have, we do have the opportunity to pay the tolls. I do have that opportunity. The idea is to be generating, we're working by energy and we're working and it's, it's almost been like the bear, it's like, the other option is to reduce services. Really, but there are certain obligations that we have and there are certain things that we don't need to do. Just saying, I mean, there are other options, you know. You know, the level that you're going to want to pay supply services and to, and reduce. I'll suggest that, like, there are other options there. But looking at where we are and what we're starting, we're working, everything that we're doing right now, there are other options. We need, we could, we could look at, and we can, you know, garbage, degradation, there's all these other things. To reduce, you know, so it doesn't need to just be one or the other option. But all the things in town, we can, we can, we want to have a whole diamond, no. Twice a week, if you want that, it's something that's absolutely inevitable, obviously, yes. But if you're sitting twenty years down the line and you've not got enough money to, to do other things like water and sewer, then that's annoying. As I know right now, just because, yes, there's no big garbage collection, does it piss away from you? That's something that we feel like that, you're important, you know, because it's a larger event, like, and there's the drop of options. And just services, automated, toilet, ten model, ten term cups, there's a lot of things. It's been one of the, but we have a service to supply, nobody supply that service. So we're, again, stand by and go and offer to supply that service and that's for.
But that doesn't imply that this year, because we are using, how much of our COVID, I believe, the COVID, like, might not be. How much was that? It's just over a hundred and sixty thousand, a hundred and sixty thousand.
As with, um, I'm just curious. So when our C A O says reduce services, what do you do if you reduce the garbage? Everybody takes all garbage to the dump? And what about people that get it?
Then they need to get, sorry, to the mayor, then, and, and it's just a, it's just an example. Because, I'm saying, one of the things that, is one of the things that we, we think, or if we were looking at things to, to look at, then, yeah, you would see we are not, we're now no longer going to supply it all. We're just gonna, we're gonna, completely. It does a number of things. It means that somebody in town will gain, they'll gain that branch out or somebody in town will then offer that as a service.
Well, that's where I was kind of going because when I first moved here, I believe it was done due, but I.
That's what it do, some of these things, it's. Oh, that, at that time, she was private agent of private in St. John. I, like I say, I was.
Um, it's for the mayor. It's, it's almost always less expensive to contract something else out than do it. Um, through the mayor, it's, it's almost always less expensive to contract something else out than doing anything else. Almost always. Is it, is it necessarily the better value for the district? I can't answer that.
Sorry, that, one of the things you would, so to talk to the public about it, you'd really do that, but you need to answer numbers on it. You would need to then understand, is that a core value that we, that we staff and want to offer our citizens? And if it's not, and it's not.
Now, there's a question.
No, I brought it, I brought it. It was, it was me that brought it up and I'm happy to stand on that one. A, the other one is a pool. It's a lot of money for the pool. There's a lot, there's a lot of science to have a pool, a garbage collection. Again, I was just going back to Second West, because I work there. Second West doesn't have a pool. Second West doesn't do garbage collection, you know, and if it did, that'd be taxes. So, but there's all the options there.
I don't want to go back to the whole situation.
Just the bodies and the blood.
Of this I live.
How's that one? Just going on, you, you garbage, you're ready to keep getting rid of it. Something that you have to discuss, but we get, we make revenue off that as well to be done. So is that substantial or it's not? Is that something as well we have to discuss? Or still revenue stream or have it contracted out to anybody who thinks that they can do it and then not having any control or what they are like in charge of residents, which could end up being more and really rest there as well.
And to be clear, like with the, with the options that have been presented to council, we're not suggesting in any way that council needs to look at getting rid of garbage collection or shut down the pool or anything like that. That was just like pie in the sky, just giving you an example of, of, you know, different options as well. So like to be clear, we're not suggesting or recommending any of them.
We're not. I, I don't think we're taking out like that. I know that you didn't want to, to, like, with the pool, I don't know if you saw that last time, but we were talking about how, um, the pool costs $65 an hour, which is like 10 people should be in that pool every hour that it's open and it's not happening. So.
Because we have nobody there.
Because, but even when, like, when we had people there, there wasn't 10 people in the pool per hour. It just, it's not a, it's not a, uh, something where we, where we found.
We're never going to agree on that, but.
Maybe not, but the thing is, is any, any service that we're providing that is not getting the money, we might have to look at one day, you know? I mean, right now it's fine and we're, it's, there's no cuts or anything like that. We're, you know, looking for lifeguards, but, I mean, there are options that, that don't always come to come from the council. That's what I'm saying.
I'm just trying to grab in my head what kind of industry we could get plants here to pay us big money, like. Right, so that's what we need, right?
The one thing that I think is important about all of this is when we talk about our asset management and all the infrastructure that we have is spending $1,000 or $100,000 on security. I think that's really important that we, because our security isn't what it should be. And I think that's, I'm really wanting to put that up, but you know, we really got to get on that security. Protect our account, so.
That's our, I didn't want to say something else, I would.
No.
That's fine. Well, I guess just a change of direction here. We're talking about percentages there. Not that it would mean too, too much. I'm just interested in finding out what we have for the, laptops, maybe we go out with charges or garbage cans or anything like that.
I, I have not gotten, it's taken me, I think, as long to do all this for council. I have not gotten to looking at pricing options. The garbage cans, as we discussed at, um, the last meeting, at prior to purchasing, will bring a report to council, um, outlining the, um, specifications that we're looking at for council's approval. Could somebody just remind me where we landed on the community stage? The stage and the events? The, the only thing that was removed from the project listing was the columbarium. Uh, the community stage, uh, approving that project will potentially reduce what, um, is needed for the April crop festival bunch of.
There was, again, $60,000, but on the, uh, public works here for the, uh, water master plan and sewer master plan, uh, with water, like, uh, anything can be done until water suspension actually land is completed. So is that something that you actually have to defer in for a year or two? Both of those were $30,000, which is to say that's something I want to do on there. It's in the public works.
Um, so, uh, through the mayor, the water and sewer master plan were part of the budget requests that were done last year. So they were pre-approved by council. That's why they're listed there. Absolutely. We are looking at probably deferring them till at least next year. It's not going to impact, uh, the taxes, just moving it from one year to the next. Potentially, it's actually going to cost more, um, but I, I can't say for sure. Um, but it doesn't impact taxation or utility fees because it's going to fund through, um, through our assistance. So.
Uh, can you tell us if there's any grants that are outstanding or denied? Are not.
Uh, so the, uh, the old school house property, we have applied for a Reddit grant. That's the 960,000. We haven't gotten, uh, any results on that yet. Uh, what is that? The grant writer, we've applied, but we haven't gotten the results yet. Um.
I, I. Yeah, the, the other guy, he should have been announced. The, uh, we should be making sure that information goes within the council. Any, but like, so we say, they are possibly oversuppressed, have a couple of informations. I'm just looking at options that they, and I'll share this, this is, like, this is private information. It may be, it's not, but a, other grants, a, in that, for example, like, I've already been in contact to say that they're possibly oversuppressed would be considered a take for less than amount. Every day trying to work through things. So they'll, they'll do that typically every year. They'll look at things and see. Or, so rather than getting 150,000, could we follow the costs, uh, through revenue or through reserves? If they can only give us 70,000, probably over 100,000, surely we need to start by a conversation with them. Have a conversation with them later on this week. It was in that. If it's, they can only give us $5,000 or 130,000, so it's good to, uh, if it's lost it then. So it's a good conversation.
Oh shit.
What are our asset management plan costs to figure out?
Sorry, I don't want to give a number because I'm not positive off the top of my head. 20,000, um, I, I could be wrong.
So it's not, it's not 107,000?
No, no. I've been thinking that there's two phases, but it wasn't 100,000.
Why I was saying that, I mean, because if we spend a bunch of money on it, not going to fall. What is the inclusive thing? That, that's about, that was the only question. That's where I was going to find it.
Uh, it's through the mayor and absolutely, I understand where you're coming from. The, the, we have a really good base now for an asset management plan. If I was to show you the spreadsheets that we have for that right now, it would blow your mind. It would have taken me five years to come up with this. Um, whereas they've worked with other communities. They already had the formulas in place. It was just, um, so even if we're going to, um, uh, work the data so that it's more accurate and more, um, focused on milouet, having spent that money to have the, the template already, the base already, well worked.
I didn't call that, well, or grants.
In addition, absolutely. Any questions?
Okay, between 7.85 and 8.5%, what would, what is, what would that, what does the percentage do for our income? So, 1%, how much can you get on that?
1% is about $29,000 now.
Oh.
That's not 1%, it's 0.65.
What's that?
0.65%. The difference is only 0.65. But again, there is, it's not just ours. It's a school tax, it's a police tax, it's a salary tax.
I just really, all these other entities that do let these, think as hard as we do is to, one, they're going to be charging the taxpayers, that's something we go to on, to one day or two. And they also need us.
Well, personally, I don't believe the hospitals should charge anything. That's what's driving partially.
Yeah, I agree to.
And I, I also feel like anything the government looks after costs more than, outside of people doing it, I'm all of that.
Okay, well, if there's no more questions, I'll make the motion of 7.85% increase. Exactly. Oh, okay. Want to make a motion?
No question for 8.5%?
Awesome. No questions or comments?
I just want to, to comment that I really don't like the idea of being. But I honestly don't think that we can do anything else. Like looking at the past taxes over the last 10 years as well, and it's nobody's fault. Probably they're pointing fingers or everything, everything favors, maybe it's done for what is best for taxpayers, but you have the time to find. That sort of accumulated as to where we are now. So I do not like the idea of being tied, but obviously don't think we can do anything less than that. Well, we are just going to be contributing to this accumulation. And this is said, whoever comes next, well, whatever, they're going to have a bigger job. And it's not pointing fingers at anybody or passing houses, everybody is stuck, passing, they thought it was best. And now find their selves in this place because they do the things that have happened, which we're not, as John says, we don't have a person to wall to see where it's, it's not going to.
But we didn't have the asset management plan. There's not the account for $100,000, that's what.
Yeah, and the asset management plan, you're correct with everything you're saying, but it's so brand new that unfortunately we have to give it that a little bit more time to, to work out where people sort of juggle to what work gets done and hopefully it'll start to develop soon. Then that will change things around here.
Okay, with that, I will call the question, call a favor. Is there any question?
Yes, there's one question. Um, I know last time that the, and one of the questions I asked is how the public best, and best engages with this. And, um, I know that from your perspective, we have, we have some sort of thoughts on it too, but I'm not quite clear on what the best way is to transmit that. The committee of the whole meetings, this is my very public conversation is, um, is the council meeting the best way to, to talk about that? Or is it the best way to have a public conversation of this?
I think so, but I think it's more, um, for me, I would like to see it happen earlier than at the first financial meeting while we're getting all the information. Like, I'd like to see what, and, and I, I think it was really great that Joan put out the, uh, a survey and a lot of people said that they would be okay with higher taxes. And I, I mean, to me, 7.85 personally is high, higher taxes. I, I disagree with that sort of one and the proxy ones because we went at the rate of pain, right? Where we, we pulled from within. But, uh, yeah, so for me, I would rather see it come like end of November, December, January, before we're getting into our, like, or after taxes, after you've paid your taxes and your service fees, non-donors. Like, for me, that's better because, you know, and, and, you know, I know that it's easy to come and say, well, the taxes are too high, but what would you want? What do you want?
Not, I'm trying not to sort of preempt my board on their comments here. Um, it's more of a question, what best ways to transmit that, right, that information? And remember, it's tough, right? That's six months before the official budget process and asking the public to think ahead, give before, kind of sounds really hard, right? And so, so I don't know, is there an option in these committee of the whole meetings to have a public conversation? Is, is there an option? Is, is it better for the public meetings to do it? Um, I, I don't, I don't know. I know in other municipalities, they, they will often have, like, a chat about the budget. There's a room and then, you know, staffs prepare, you can chat with people, but, um, I, it's, less of a content, more of a form.
Right. Uh, through the mayor, so at each of these committee of the whole meetings, there has been an opportunity for the public to speak and ask questions. Um, particularly the first one, it was open, uh, I think a couple of times during the meeting for the public to speak and ask questions. Attending the meetings, even if it's virtually, is, is the best option for you to get your opinion via council. Your, um, you've been, the public has been free to ask questions, uh, give council their opinions, uh, through each of these committee of the whole meetings. Uh, there was the budget survey that the mayor mentioned. Um, that was, uh, an opportunity for the public to, to pre, or proactively tell council what they were looking for, um, in upcoming budgets. Come to the council meetings, um, talk to the counselors and the mayor when they're out in the public. Those are your, your voices on council. It's the, the members that are sitting before you today. Um.
I had a question just regarding the, the, uh, the outreach that you had through the email, um, even responding from council. Is there, are there any, uh, key items that are called raised that you guys have taken into consideration during these discussions? Because I think it's really important, even if it's an isolated comment, didn't give the council opportunity for pause or reflection? And were there any other items that were, like, need beyond the, the, the we're comfortable with? It just to be able to highlight any areas within that budget that could be axed or added to, because it's very high level. We talked about, from what I've heard, we talked about, you know, uh, some machinery. But what did the public, what has the public said beyond, you know, uh, the meetings and the questions they had in person? Have you guys taken into consideration through the budget process? Is any?
Well, I can name one in particular was, um, the, the hospital and the, they, people, you know, there were suggestions that we should do, uh, incentive programs to the doctors.
incentive programs to the doctors to give them the state of the brain. That was something that, that we had talked about, but I think that we and of course, CEO, you know, came up with the idea of improving our rec center, because that's also what a lot of people wanted, they wanted the rec center open, they wanted just particularly the weight room, correct, if I'm wrong, the, the weight room open, and they wanted it open like twenty four seven. So now we're looking at ways to have that open twenty four seven, and to also take what they said about what they needed in the weight room, and, and make it viable for all of the public, instead of giving one or two people incentive programs, let's take that money, put it into an infrastructure that we already have, that is better and, and more applicable for everyone. So that will cost money, that will cost a lot of money to, to, to do all that, but that's part of the, the tax as, as well, too, so. Uh, do you want to add to that?
Through the mayor, I'm like, I'll probably just going to say this, that will be just, we understand, we're just on a street where you clearly, we understand those things that people want. We want to see as the public want, we want to hear what we can. I would love to have a three-layer LED viewable bench that has gorgeous side walls, really nice access and diagonal parking, and that's what we want, we want to see, because everyone else wants that, but there are things that we need that we can't go from, like, sustainable water, infrastructure, and the infrastructure that is applying to your eh, the new standard, possible more fire protection, and one to, so, and if all of gave us their wish, their, their one list, that's fantastic, and we really listened to that, because of the things we can work with, but there are things that we we can, we want those things, unfortunately, it was the other things that we need to go through asset management advice, and really, I have to make sure that what I'm hoping to do is that we're not being responsible by just looking at the one, two, the needs, then we get a drop. Just, oh, sorry.
Through the mayor. So that budget survey, sixty three percent of the respondents to the budget survey said they would prioritize the rec center for increased funding. Council is spending just over five hundred thousand dollars potentially in the rec center this year, and I, I would imagine that part of the, the push for, for those projects is a direct result of hearing from more than half of the community, that that would be a priority for them. More than half of the community also said to balance the budget, they would support increasing property tax and utility rates, which is what council has been dissecting tonight. So absolutely, the responses, and, and I was super happy with the number of responses that we've got, I hope we'll get more next time. Absolutely, they formed a basis for council's budget decisions this year.
I'm sort of, I'm part of this conversation, I have a couple of sort of thoughts that we, that the chamber came up with, and you can, I sort of like a little statement, or share, share some thoughts, so, okay, I don't, that's one of my earlier questions this morning, what is the sort of appropriate venue to share policy like that? You know, is it the committee of the whole meeting, is it the public engagement session, is it the council meeting? Um, but.
Okay. I don't know, I was.
I know.
That's a wonderful question here.
Yes, I know. Um, okay, so, so good afternoon, thanks so much for, for the public input, so I'm going to talk behalf of the Lulawon Chamber, our eighth member Board of Directors, and a hundred and four member businesses in Lulawon, and just want to share some ideas on the, on the numbers of the twenty, twenty five budget. Um, as a chamber, we're actually cautiously, optimistically looking to budget, and, and, and we, we want to share some ideas and some thoughts as we look through the numbers about how to, how to help council make decisions that are positive and lead to the continued growth of our community and businesses. Um, we are proposing an eight percent raise to the, to the district property taxes, and that is significant, I think there's no, no question about that. But we are also quite encouraged by the clear investment direction that our district is pursuing, and the planned use of the significant portion of the reserve funds. This just proposed property tax increase represents the fifth increase in a row. Those increases are total of almost thirty percent, so they are quite significant. The district, in this time, in the last five years, has also ended many years with the surplus, which is being moved into reserve funds to understand at just over ten million dollars, so all these things are significant. So to us, we had a good discussion that taxing increases to residents and businesses while running surpluses is a little counterintuitive. But I think it's clear from the discussion today and the last couple of times that we've recognized that, and I think we've had a lot of discussions over that, we're partly set that is the forefront of discussion, there's a lot of money, what are we going to do? So as a community, I think our, our goal should be to, we think our goal should be to attract additional investment to the area and solve many of the challenges that we're facing, housing, healthcare, or infrastructure. The, the significant investments that are proposed in this budget with property taxing fees are definitely needed to, to improve our community, that's the water infrastructure projects, the road infrastructure projects, and recreation projects, all of these assets that need that need to be replaced, because investment in assets creates improvements in the district's community, all of our building and, and our assets allow our businesses and our community to make the same investments. And we also want to point to the fact that there are many of the current issues that our businesses are facing are as a result of poor assets, we can retain, we have issues with staffing, with issues with recruitment and retention, seasonal staff is a huge issue in this town, attracting professionals, engineers, doctors, all these things are huge issues. And so all of you are facing this issue, the hospitals facing this issues, and our businesses are facing this issue as well, and we need to sort of solve that issue. And so, so it's, it's very positive that we, that we, that we see these investments, and we're actually quite comfortable. As the budget moves through the approval and implementation process, the other important thing we want to raise is accountability. We'd like to see a framework through which we can see how these funds are being spent throughout the year. Are there quarterly financial project updates? I know, I think that was something that was discussed in, in previous council meetings to bring quarterly budget update. Are there key performance measurements for each project that the project holder reports back on to make sure that these things actually move forward and the money is being spent appropriately? And I think, we think there's many opportunities to, to future the investment in Lulawon. There's other ideas, business attraction campaigns, supporting local events, beautification projects, that can all lead to additional investment, and that's really what we need, we need additional investment, we know this is struggling. So this year, I, we think that the district will have a real opportunity to use its reserves, make a significant difference in our town, giving the way for future growth, which solves a lot of the issues that we're discussing today. So as a chamber, we actually support the budget, we're happy to see that, that this, this is moving forward, and, and yeah, we want to offer help and make sure that we invest in our town.
Yeah. Uh, to answer a few of those, I mean, we do have our, our municipal objectives that are on a quarterly basis, you know, if there's one word I've learned in politics, it's pivot, and we never know what's going to happen, and you're going to have to change course. You've got to remember, we only have a couple of senior staff that do an exceptional job, and to have them do that work, repetition, it always takes away from something else, too. So while it's always good to have accountability, and we do, because I think that myself and these councillors, you know, spend a lot of time coming in here, asking questions that the public never sees, I mean, it takes us, gosh, probably a good year and a half, just to go over everything and, and try and get the knowledge to learn a little bit about a lot of things, and these, the staff that we have is so minimal that, you know, we take up a lot of their time just asking those questions, and each one of us all together, and, you know, so the accountability, even though you might not think that you see it, it is there, and when you see it out in the public, then you see it, and you can see I, I think a huge change from the time that our C A O came from April to now, and, and all the changes that have happened, and do we have to report them? He does actually report them, but, you know, there's a lot more that goes on behind this thing, isn't there? Than we see, and to bring it up to every council meeting and provide this amount of work every time is, like, every three months, I think, would be just quite a bit, but I mean, you could jump in here. Okay, is there any further questions?
Yeah, I, I think it's, I think it's unfair, but, but, I think. I think that accountability is always something that we all need to see, and I think something we just kind of get ahead of, forget. But I think K P I is an accountability that I should improve on, I would take that one, but I think that moving it forward does take away, because it just means developing, or rather than Johnny starting at six thirty and finishing at five thirty, eh, that we're, that we're starting earlier, Johnny's not. And you see, you'll drive past, and you'll see the lights on at nine o'clock, right? Eh, and, and tend to be doing it a hundred percent of the time, all the way, but I definitely take the comments with, probably some review that, and probably both are the same thing, and I think that that level of accountability is, is needed, and I think, yeah, it's there. Eh, but I appreciate what the mayor's saying. Working on the provision is very far, the best that I can. Eh, I'm all from the base, eh, I took Friday Monday off, and I'm from every day, I know, like, I'm really from every day, eh, he did manage to get a new rec manager, he did manage to get a new platter on the board, but just eat us, online just now, just, you know, the only deal just that I could get me was on my holiday, to do interviews, and we ended up doing two interviews, and then I ended up on the S M D, then I ended up on the N A P, then I ended up on talking to N P, and my whole day was just just getting through that, so, eh, but I do, I appreciate your comment, I think it's more accountability, definitely for regular updates and something on these things should be done, and hopefully they will give the proper officer, we definitely proper officer platter in place, hopefully we have a lot more time to do that, but I'll take those comments, I think that's.
But we all have to be careful of growing up, and that's why we lose people, is we go to, we ask too much of them, so. There's that.
I don't come in at a time. No comment.
But we trust the chamber will encourage big misses to move into our community, and we'll, we'll put that on your plate, and look forward to seeing what they can give with that chicken, and that's very good. Okay. Nothing further, I asked, will somebody please note that the March twenty fifth, twenty twenty five, we needed that full meeting to turn council plan, council rate, everything. Great, okay, thank you.